Regular Board of Education Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March the 4th, 2025. Charlotte, may you please call the roll?
Mr. Gagnon.
Present.
Mr. Goldman.
Here.
Dr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Meriman.
Here.
Mrs. Nazarela.
Present.
Dr. Thomas Farkason.
Here.
Mrs. Jagaloff.
Present.
Student Representative Sarah Granquist.
Present.
And Student Representative Alexis Nguyen.
Here.
Thank you, and Sarah, may you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have a revision to the agenda order, however, would like to use point of privilege to recognize a pillar in our community who has passed on, referring to Dr. Tracy Wilson. For some who may not know, but for most who do know, Dr. Wilson contributed in educating all of us for over thirty-five years here in the district. And even once she completed her time as a teacher within the district, she continued educating, serving as our town historian. There are many anecdotes, many reflections that can be shared about Dr. Wilson. But one of the things I think that's so important is that her legacy of teaching, her legacy of having us to open our minds to think, to be aware, is longstanding. She is someone who spoke up and encouraged others to speak up. She is someone who spoke truth to power. She is someone that recognized the importance of knowing our history, even as ugly as it may be. There's no shame in recognizing shame from the past, but there is shame in not recognizing how we can change it moving forward. And she encouraged all of us to be empowered in that regard, from the young to the old. And although her physical presence has passed on, we cannot have her legacy to pass on. We need to hear her voice, and it is something that not only our young people can speak up about, but we adults as well. And so I'm going to ask for a moment of silence, please, to honor and out of respect for Dr. Tracy Wilson. Thank you. And with that, we now shall proceed to public communication. This is where we're able to hear from you, your thoughts, your questions, your suggestions. Each individual is allowed three minutes to speak. We ask when you go to the podium to please share your name and your town of residence. We like to start by proceeding with those talking on agenda items. And for the awareness, our agenda for this evening includes presentation of the superintendent's 2025-2026 budget recommendations, as well as approval of minutes from the February nineteenth, 2025 Board of Education meeting. I have a sign-up sheet here with just one name. We'll identify that name, and that is Dave Poliuk. If you may please come to the podium. And I have to say that he is certainly not unfamiliar to all of us. Out of respect for Dave, and he'll announce himself as well, but he is a former Board of Education member, so it is an honor to have him here as well.
Thank you. It's good to see you. I'm actually speaking on an item that's not on the agenda. Is that okay?
Well, yes. In light of our recent policy change, and even if there were not the policy change, we are receiving comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Great. Well, thank you. It's good to be here, as Dr. Thomas Farkason recommended. Mentioned, I am a past member of the Board of Ed. It's been over five years since I was on the Board of Ed, and we've seen a lot of changes. It's great to see everyone. It's neat to see that all your meetings are so crowded. Thank you. I know they're all like this. Wow. Hey, but I wanted to speak tonight about something that's very important to me. It's minority representation on the Board of Education. You know, the minority representatives serve a special purpose for us all. They bring different viewpoints and opinions and make the board stronger. But I want to mention something to you. For those in the audience who may not be aware, we have seven seats on the Board of Ed. Two of them are reserved for minority members. So regardless of which party has the most votes, we have at least two members of opposition to kind of keep things in balance. Now, one of the secrets, though, is that minority representation on the Board of Ed is D E I in action. Let me say that again. Minority representation on the Board of Ed is diversity, equity, and inclusion in action. Well, how's that possible? Think about the diversity. It doesn't require a racial component. You know, our minority members bring different viewpoints, opinions, values, perspectives, and they run in different circles than the majority, right? So, thanks for that input. Equity is the best one. Now, even though, and forgive me for this, when I ran, I was the lowest vote getter in my party, but our minority members received fewer votes than the majority. But still, we include them fully on the board. There's no asterisk next to their name. They're not asked to sit at a separate table. They're full members of the board, with all the rights and responsibilities thereof. And then inclusion. Our minority members are included as a financial examiner, or on every committee, as majority and minority members. So, as a conclusion here, let me just say that the minority members serve as a living example of how D E I can work. And that's great. So if anybody ever comes up to you and says, "I don't get D E I. I don't know what it means, what it is," this is a great example. Tell them about how the majority members of the Board of Ed make the board stronger, better, and it's good for the students and the town. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the only name we had on the list, but we'll ask if there's anyone in the audience who cares to speak. We'll ask again. All right, we shall pause on public communications. And now, moving on to non-staff communications and reports, so we're able to hear from our young people what's happening within our schools. So let us first begin with Alexis sharing about Conard. What's going on at Conard?
Happy March, everyone. We have plenty of events planned to keep this month exciting. Also, for anyone counting, we are officially less than one hundred days away from graduation. So keep pushing, seniors. You're almost there. Last Wednesday, we had our Black History Month panel and learned more about the month's theme of African-Americans and labor. We'd like to thank all of the panelists involved, like Mrs. Jagaloff, and as we learned so much from your stories. Additionally, a huge shout-out to Junior Juliana Farkason for moderating the panel with such ease. On Friday, we had our blood drive, which was organized and run by the EMS classes. It was a wonderful opportunity for these students to use their learning in a tangible way. Thank you to the people that volunteered to donate blood. We will be able to help a total of one hundred and sixty people because of you. Thank you again to Mrs. Vauder and the EMS students. Kudos to Kelly Casey and the Student Council for their fantastic pet food drive this weekend. On Saturday, they set up at Luna Pizza, gathering an incredible number of donations and raising over two hundred dollars. All contributions will be delivered to their conference this week, the CT Student Council Convention at Woodland High School. Great work. We are fortunate to have an outstanding student council, and thank you, Ms. Casey, for all of your support. The PTO will be sponsoring a breakfast for educators on March fifteenth called Lucky to Have Educators Like You. We'd like to thank them for their continued support for teachers and students. The opening of Disaster the Musical is quickly approaching. There will be shows this weekend and next weekend, with all shows being at seven PM, except for the Sunday performances, which I believe will start at two PM. They will also be hosting the Senior Citizen Performance on March sixth at two PM. If you haven't already, go buy your tickets online. You don't want to miss this musical comedy about the seventies. We are super excited to announce that ESPN will be sponsoring our winter pep rally on March twenty-eighth. We will be celebrating our amazing Hall-Conard Unified Sports Teams, our winter sports, and any other accomplishments made by Conard students over the winter season. Thank you to Lisa Daly, Tracy Kelly, and Heather Russell for helping to organize this one-of-a-kind event. All of our sports teams had a fantastic winter. The Hall-Conard Girls Hockey Team was crowned champion of the CCC Tournament on Friday, something that has not been accomplished in fifteen years. Additionally, boys' basketball will be playing their first playoff game tonight away against Notre Dame West Haven, while girls' basketball will tip off tomorrow night at home against Stanford. We wish both teams good luck with their state tournament run. Senior Tess Sherry won second place at the New England Indoor Track Meet for the Mile, and sophomore Harry Moreno was named the state champion for his weight class in wrestling. Finally, the Boys Swim and Dive Team will be competing in the CCC West Championship tonight, so good luck to them as well. Lastly, since it is Parent-Teacher Conference Week, students will have late arrival on Thursday with a ten-thirty AM start, so you can put your alarms back.
Thank you, Alexis. Sarah, please share with us what's going on at Hall.
We are having a great start to March over at Hall with many exciting student achievements and activities in all departments. We are excited to announce that all three of our National Merit semifinalists progressed to become finalists, meaning they were recognized for their academic and community achievements. Today, the National Honor Society ran our Spring Blood Drive, and we want to thank everyone that helped to organize this event or donated blood. Over in the Arts Department, we had our annual Shakespeare competition on Friday, the twenty-first, where students performed various Shakespeare works. This event was hosted by the English Department, and our winner was Junior Gabby Goldfarb, and the runner-up was freshman Constantinos Papasavas. Both of these students will go on to the branch competition in Greenwich in March, and we wish them the best of luck as they represent Hall. Last Thursday and Friday night, the Theater Department held their annual ten-minute play festival, where students create and direct their own mini plays. This event was sold out, and as always, an amazing production from our Theater Department. Like Alexis mentioned, we had our Black History Month panel last Wednesday, and it was very engaging and educational to hear from community members about their experiences in a variety of fields. We want to thank all of the panel participants and organizers for bringing this amazing event to West Hartford students. Over in the sports world, we have had a number of individual achievements and team successes. In the class double L championships for wrestling, Mike Ortiz was the champion in his weight class. Anya Lescham, Anthony McEwen, and Colby Herlock were all awarded all-conference honors in boys' and girls' basketball. Our Boys Indoor Track four-by-eight-hundred relay came in fifth at the New England Championship Meet, which is an amazing achievement. We are so proud of all of our student athletes and the way they represent Hall. We also had many senior night events for our winter sports over the past few weeks, and our Boys Swimming and Diving Senior Night, we honored John McClure, who has been a coach at Hall for fifty years. He coaches both the girls' and boys' swim and dive teams and is an integral part of the Titan community. Yesterday, one of our administrators, Dr. Kessler, ran the Safe School Climate Committee meeting, which was attended by our school security, local law enforcement, students, and teachers, who all worked together to discuss issues in the Hall community and make our school a safer place for all. We also want to acknowledge and thank the Career and Technical Education Coordinator, Paulina Domica, for sharing a number of amazing opportunities with students over the past few weeks, including internships and job shadowing related to journalism, filmmaking, aerospace engineering, culinary arts, and artificial intelligence. We look forward to many more exciting music performances with pops and jazz, athletic events with our spring sports, and academic activities in the month of March. And thank you to all of the administrators, teachers, coaches, and community members that make these events possible.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you both, Alexis and Sarah. You represent your schools so very well. Thank you very much. Now, moving on to unfinished business, which we have none of, but we certainly do have new business, where we have the presentation of the Superintendent's 2025-2026 Budget Recommendations. Therefore, seeking a motion that the Board of Education receive the Superintendent's Recommended 2025-2026... Excuse me. I want to say that once again. Oh, my. Seeking a motion that the Board of Education receive the Superintendent's Recommended 2025-2026 Education Budget, and begin the process of reviewing and modifying for final approval and adoption as the Board of Education budget at the April the first, 2025 Board of Education meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ethan. Discussion. We're passing it over to you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And good evening, and welcome to March. As you may know, March is Board of Education Appreciation Month, and I am certain that someone smart identified this month, given your responsibilities to receive budget presentations. And so, no influence there. I just want to appreciate you in advance. And it is my distinct pleasure to be presenting this budget. The budget, obviously, the work of so many people. I just want to give a huge, huge shout-out to Elizabeth Hewitt, who works tirelessly with her entire team, but certainly also thank all of the individuals here, the entirety of my executive team, the entirety of our administrative leadership team. We have members from the WHA here who represent the work that goes on on a daily basis to really take our school mission and put it into action. And this is certainly one of the most critical responsibilities as a board in order to be able to support the continuation of that educational mission. Just by way of overview, to remind folks, tonight will be an overview of the budget. You're obviously receiving your books for the first time. We will hold and we will talk about our board workshops, where we will break these down into much more significant detail, allow you the opportunity for questions that we can respond to. But my intention tonight is to try to give you and our public at home the big picture, and then all of these materials will be available online following the meeting. So with that, I'm just going to start with some preliminary information and share some things. Oh, and can you drop? Thank you. I'm sorry. Picture looks great to me, but it's right here in front of my face on the computer. So as the screen comes up, what should be familiar to you is the statement of the Board of Education Goals. And I wanted to point out that in 2024, within this school year, Niche Ratings listed West Hartford as the number-one community in the state of Connecticut in which to live, and provided our schools with an A-plus rating. The A-plus rating is obviously connected not only to the hard work of the folks that I thanked, but really their work in these directions: to advance achievement for all students, to nurture the intellectual, physical, and emotional well-being, to create a safe and respectful learning community, and importantly, to attract, retain, and develop a high-quality staff through professional development, the provision of resources, and appropriate learning environments. Schools are the major factor within the Niche Ratings, and they're based on factors such as academic test scores, parent, and student reviews. So it is, you know, no mystery that our schools are a foundational component of the success of this community. And it was Mayor Cantor who remarked yesterday at her annual State of the Town address, "Success is no accident. It is the result of generations of hard work and continuous effort. It is a result of those who dedicate themselves to something larger than themselves." In terms of the vision of the graduate, you know, our success as a school district is no accident. It is really based on targeted and programmed instruction in and around these learning outcomes and these habits of mind for students. And I am proud to say that I do stand on the shoulder of giants, generations of teachers, such as Dr. Wilson, who you mentioned, and thank you for that tribute and statement. Amazing giants that are out in the field currently, that are working tirelessly for our students. And there are nine thousand one hundred and thirty-five students, in terms of who it is that folks are committing themselves to, when we listen to Mayor Cantor, and that commitment, that generational commitment. It is the nine thousand-plus students in the district. And it is an appreciation and an understanding of the diversity in that district that drives our educational programming needs and our efforts, our approaches, our professional learning, our strategies at retention and academic and extracurricular programming. So it is interesting to point out that one in four students in West Hartford Public Schools live in a home, go to a home each day where a language other than English is spoken. And among those, or among all students, nearly one in ten are English-language learners themselves, not yet proficient in the language. Nearly one in two students are students of color. Nearly one in three students live with socioeconomic disadvantages compared to their peers. And one in five students, or nearly one in five students, qualify for special education services. So the diversity of need, the diversity of perspective is dramatic. It is something that makes this a very culturally-rich district, but it is also something that is at the foundation of all of the programming that we do. So when we think about what we do, we are unquestionably a school district that's committed to the education of our learners, to a commitment to our mission to prepare and inspire all students, a promise to meet the needs of every child every day. And as a board, the adoption of the budget, as I said, is one of the singular most critical responsibilities that is in service to that mission. So what I have up on the board is a snapshot of the results, of the one-year results, forgetting the generations of results that we've been able to produce for West Hartford. This is a snapshot of the one-year results that our students achieve. This is part of a statement of our return on investment. And so I'd like to spend a little bit of time, because this is what constitutes our current operating budget. These are the results that we have achieved thus far as a result of the budget you passed last year, and the foundation of the budget that I present tonight. So our pre-K programming, obviously, we've talked about and seen before that it is nationally-recognized through Edutopia, but I recently shared that our pre-K programming earned a nearly-perfect NIAC accreditation, national accreditation with very high standards. We've talked about our elementary schools. I've mentioned six of our elementary schools this year were named as schools of distinction. And based on the U.S. News and World reported reporting rankings, and assuming a base of approximately thirteen-hundred-and-forty-nine elementary schools in Connecticut, all of our elementary schools are within the top twenty percent, with most of them in the top ten percent. Our middle schools have academic achievement that places them in the top quarter of all middle schools in Connecticut. Conard and Hall, incredibly situated on the foundation of everything that happens pre-K through eight, they continue to earn national recognition with gold medal performance in the Advanced Placement Honor Roll Program. Hall was further recognized this past year with an AP Access Award, whereby the demographics of those students taking advanced placement testing matched the demographics of the school itself. Further, when we look at our UConn Early College Experience participation, we note that the combined Conard and Hall participation exceeds that of all school districts in the state of Connecticut. And we've recently seen that, separate from our college programming, when we think about our career track programming, we were able to award two-hundred-and-fifty-four different career credentials last year. We think about the extraordinary extracurricular programming I heard our students mention. This coming March twenty-eighth, our Unified Sports Program athletes from both Conard and Hall will be recognized by the Special Olympics, with press coverage by ESPN, as mentioned, and other major networks, as they are awarded as one of only three national united champion schools. We've celebrated other incredible extracurricular accomplishments, to include international recognition for our Quizlet teams, the Odyssey of the Mind, national recognitions, and many more. for our Quizlet teams, the Odyssey of the Mind, national recognitions, and many more. When we think about fine and performing arts, definitely a hallmark of the district, we've seen the recent accolades relating to the Hall Concert Jazz Band at the Mingus Awards. We have our own Pam Murphy, our Visual Arts Director, who's been named the Connecticut Outstanding Art Administrator of the Year. And our own Emmett Drake has been named the Connecticut Music Association Outstanding Educator for two thousand and twenty-five. The talents that are showcased, the awards that, that our fine and performing arts bring home are too numerous to mention. And our Board representatives, as recently as, as moments ago, have shared the amazing accomplishments of student athletes, which has included, which have included undefeated season, record-breaking point totals for individual or team play. We have the girls hockey CCC title, the girls swimming CCC title, multiple state opens and state tournaments that are ongoing as we speak. And finally, a significant and incredible point of pride in our special education programming, with our post-secondary program earning national recognition for exceptional transition services and career preparation. This week, Melissa and Andy from our team will be presenting at the National American Association of School Administrators on our post-secondary programming as a model for school districts across the country. This is what we do. It is the return on investment for what we put into our educational budget, and it is the legacy that we try to uphold and improve upon. Now, how do we do it? You've seen this slide before, but I want to, I want to point out that when I was in elementary school, many, many moons ago, West Hartford was the second highest in the state for per pupil expenditures in and around the early seventies. Over the course of my thirty-one years in the district, we have moved from, when I started, we were at forty-eighth, to most recently, this last year, one-hundredth of one hundred and sixty-nine towns. We continue to remain near or just above the lowest one-third of all districts in our per pupil expenditures. So it, it is intended to speak to the value for the investment. So what's on this slide, a number of, a number of figures that I want to point out are most recent per pupil expenditure, and per pupil expenditures are calculated and finalized at the very end of a school year after all, you know, after the budget is closed and all expenditures are, are finalized and, and the student counts are likewise closed with the last collection in June. Our West Hartford per pupil expenditure is just over twenty thousand, twenty thousand seven hundred and six dollars per pupil. And what's intended here is, is for you to have an appreciation of, of the value of that, starting with the notion that first, that's below the DURG-B average, and that is, and that is below the state median. And what I want to point out with those, with those figures, the five-point-two million, is that it's a savings of five-point-two million. Because we're able to operate below the DURG-B average, our consumers, our families, you know, realize a five-point-two million-dollar savings if we were to spend equivalently with our demographic reference group. A nine-point-two million dollars if we were to spend equivalently with the state. But beyond that, because that's kind of a hypothetical, I, I want to point to something that's maybe more tangible for families, going back to our pre-K-12 programming. We provided this last year, we talked about this at one of our board meetings when we reviewed our, our advanced placement in our Early College Experience programming, we provided the equivalent of a two-point-seven million dollars in college coursework savings based on the in-state tuition seat cost for those courses that our students have taken. All right? So what we are spending and the economy of scale that we're able to achieve to be below average in that per pupil spending is something that's significant. So where does all that money go? We understand that salary and benefits are the absolute largest driver of our budget. They comprise for this coming budget in the anticipated eighty-one percent of the overall, and that's down slightly from last year. That's also realizing that to control costs, to, you know, when, when we look at the rest of the budget, the only way for us to control costs or to lower costs is realist in any significant way, is to lower our number of employees, which is, can be at odds with our educational mission, obviously. But the budget that I'm presenting this evening reflects an overall reduced staffing of eight-point-two positions from our current levels today. That's following on cuts of ten-point-six positions that we enacted last, for the current year, from the previous year's budget. And that's not counting the twenty-one and a half positions that were funded under ESAR that we did not continue. So in total, we're looking at forty fewer period, forty fewer positions from two years ago during the midst of the ESAR funding. Now, the wedges of the pie that have increased and are significant influences on the budget, certainly our tuition costs. And we've all been following the news. We had our budget workshop where we talked about the significant state shortfall in our excess cost reimbursement, which is going to drive an increase in this budget recommendation to you for out-of-district tuition. And I'll talk a little bit more about that on a, on an upcoming slide, as well as transportation costs. Transportation costs will be influenced not only by a regular contractual increase, but also based on significant busing costs related to out-of-district tuition. And just to talk about this excess cost reimbursement briefly, in case we hadn't seen the news, there, there had, we, we have been celebrating the fact that we were anticipating a forty-million-dollar additional funding for the current year. And despite a line item veto, there's, there are actions in place that will, that will, are promised to make that forty million dollars be realized, which again will benefit us for this current year. There's a forty-million-dollar increase in the Governor's twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven budget. But where we are today and what is impacting in a significant way this budget recommendation to you is that there is currently no funding plan for excess cost reimbursement shortfall in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So we'll, we'll talk a little specifics of that. What I'd like to do now is go over some of the, some of the major drivers of the budget. So we begin with the fact that in, if, if I were to simply preserve all of the services that we are, that we are known for, that are an expectation of the community, that have served us so well relative to the accolades of what we do and why people move to West Hartford, in order to preserve everything that we're doing, there would be an overall increase of just short of sixteen million dollars when you look at what are, what are the updates to the contracts, what are the, what are the new costs relative to services, electricity, things of this nature, and, and of course, healthcare and benefits. That's an eight percent roll-forward budget. Eight percent to do next year exactly the same thing with exactly the same number of people as what we're doing this year. That eight percent increase is based on salary increases across all of our different bargaining units. We, we see an overall increase of roughly five-point-two percent, and that's based on market settlements. And the value, both the dollar value and the percentage increase is consistent with last year. It's actually just a tiny, tiny, tiny shade less than last year. So it's not unexpected. It stems from, you know, a step in general wage increase that, that we do. So as, 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 whether they're teachers or other people moving forward in the experience scale, they're gonna, they're gonna go on to one next higher step, and then obviously any, any wage increases that we've bargained. In addition, I am programming for some additional staffing, realistically looking within our, within our par educator line to support student needs. But as mentioned earlier, the overall budget will reflect a total reduction of about eight-point-two positions, which we'll get to. We do anticipate medical expense increases that are, that are fairly significant, roughly three-point-six million dollars or thirteen-point-six percent over last, over the current budget. That is driven significantly by the current estimate for an increase in benefits from our state partnership plan, roughly ten percent. That's a jump from last year. Last year, the state partnership plan increase was roughly five percent at, at budget time in terms of projection. And we were hopeful that, that that, that percentage might come in lower, but that is not the information that the state has provided us at this time. So we, we must responsibly budget for that potential increase. We're also seeing increases in pension and other benefit expenses, specifically our contribution to the town pension plan, increased long-term disability and life insurance premiums, and the increased social security costs consistent with wage increase. Transportation expenses are increasing by one point, are projected to increase by approximately one-point-three million dollars or twelve percent from their current value. That is a combination of both the contractual rate increase as we negotiate, and we do have the most efficient, effective, and cost-effective busing contract kind of out there in terms of, there's, there's not necessarily a monopoly, but a very small number of players, and we're very happy with our provider. It's also due to out-of, out-of-district special, special education busing. So in terms of where we are today with our busing costs relative to in-street busing, kids we're picking up from neighborhoods and driving, we're, we're, we are on target. But we know that we will have, especially when there's an out-of-district placement, you know, it's a long bus drive and it's, and it's additional buses that we have to provide. But the big, the big one here on the page is the, the tuition expense increase. We're programming for approximately three, a three-point-seven million-dollar increase in out-of-district tuition, which is coming, it's a nearly forty percent to the previous line. There is a, and, and there is only required to be a small number increase in the number of student outplacements based on the significance of cost. We've talked about the fact that the, the tuition rates for these, for these institutions are spiraling. There's talk at the state level about potential controls that may be put in for that in the future. Those will not be in place for next year. But it really comes down to not only those factors, but they're, they're complicated by the reimbursement shortfall. And I just want to take a moment to kind of explain that shortfall for folks, because it's a, it's a complicated formula, and it's based on that per pupil expenditure. So we saw on the, on the previous slide that the average per pupil expenditure for West Hartford is just over twenty thousand dollars. So to make this simple, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say, let's just call that twenty dollars. So if we were spending twenty dollars to, to educate the average student, the state says that we'll reimburse you for any costs that are four and a half times greater. All right? And for sake of easy math, I'm gonna round that up and call it five times greater. And so once we start to spend more than a hundred dollars on special, on specialized programming for a student, the state would say that they would reimburse us. In an ideal world, they'd reimburse us a hundred percent. The last time that we were provided a hundred percent reimbursement for all costs that would be over this fictional hundred dollars was in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. It was actually two years in a row, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, districts were reimbursed one hundred percent. For the bulk of the years following that, we were reimbursed for expenses at about eighty cents on the dollar, on average, for quite a number of years, right up until very recently in, in two thousand and twenty-two. The state moved to a tiered system where they would try to reimburse districts based on the, the general wealth, which is of a district, which is based on a scale that they use. And in two thousand and twenty-two, we were reimbursed seventy-four cents on the dollar for those excess costs. In two thousand and twenty-three, sixty-seven cents on the dollar. And in this current year, we're reimbursed at sixty-two cents on the dollar. Our projections for next year are, are in the, somewhere in the fifties in terms of what that reimbursement rate will be. We're facing this year, as you know, we've reported to you, a three-point-seven million-dollar shortfall from a hundred percent reimbursement. And there's a statute on the books that says that relative to the tiers, were there appropriate funding, we'd be reimbursed at eighty-eight percent. So were we reimbursed at that eighty-eight percent in the tier that we're in, we would be facing, we're two-point-eight million short from that reimbursement. West Hartford as a district faces the sixth-largest overall shortfall in the state of Connecticut in terms of real dollars. So it is, it is a significant driver for us, and I'm dramatically appreciative of our legislature for the action that they've done and the effort and the emphasis that's been put on this. But we are, we are moving into a year of uncertainty as to what that will look like in the coming year. All other expenses, you can see, this is our general insurance workers' compensation costs, contractual services, computer software, those are the major drivers under all other. And it's generally flat funding. It's, it's a, it's a increase of two-tenths of one percent. So to try to offset these increases, I'd like to talk about what I'll be recommending, and we will go through each of these changes and, and, and what's involved under specific lines as we go through our workshop. We'll go through in significant detail. So I'll give you kind of a high-level, high-level picture. First, we'll look at enrollment changes. And enrollment overall, for this coming year, if we look at total enrollment, won't change all that significantly from where we are. But we will have a stricter adherence to our class-size guidelines, certainly as they exist at the elementary level. We know that we've been coming out of that since COVID over a period of years. We had additional staffing in COVID, and we had a slow return to our class-size guidelines. We'll also look at, at our middle schools and our high schools, what those enrollments are, and, and just look at any classes and things that are, that are lower enrolled. So we do anticipate that we can make elementary classroom section reductions. We expect we can tighten up under elementary specials correspondingly. If we have fewer, if I have fewer fourth-grade classes, then I'll have just a shade, a fraction fewer of fourth-grade art or music or something like that. We are going to see an increase at the middle school. We have, we have a relatively small cohort leaving eighth grade, and we have a larger sixth-grade cohort incoming. So we anticipate that we'll, we'll move up probably by four teachers at the middle school, and we'll have a corresponding reduction at the high school. So overall, we anticipate a net reduction of six-point-three positions based on enrollment. For special instruction, we're talking about special education and the services that we need. And we do see, despite some changes in enrollment relatively fat, or flat, or reductions in some areas, we see an increase, and we've seen this over the last several years, growth within our special education population. As was pointed out on our demographics page, we're, we're closing in on twenty percent of students in the district requiring special education services. That, that is when you're looking not only at all grade levels, pre-K through post-secondary, and students for whom we're responsible, who may attend private schools. We have legal responsibility for them as well, so they factor into the budget. So we do anticipate that we'll need to increase within our intensive academic programs at the elementary. You've heard about the unfunded state mandate related to post-secondary education, where students now, it used to be that they aged out at age twenty-two, and now there's a requirement to educate them through the full school year in which they turn age twenty-two. So we used to have a lot of students So we used to have a lot of students who would fall off our rolls at various points. Now they're, now they're not, so we'll see an increase in staffing related to that. We do anticipate with the tightening and with elementary, we can, or we can reduce some resource teachers to offset some of that. But those folks in positions may get picked up with ads that we'll need with an increase for resource at the middle school, an additional BCBAs, some speech and language, and psychologist support. So in total, in special education, based on student needs, we will need to program for an addition of 4.5 teachers. Program delivery speaks to some of the, some of the important programming that we do that's, that's separate from just classroom instruction. So we are looking at math coaching position, potential reduction of one position in that, in that space. We're looking across our intervention, and we anticipate that we can reduce by one position at the middle school for intervention services based on tightening schedules and more efficient, more efficient class size guidelines. We do anticipate likewise that we can trim a small amount of quest staffing. But we do have a need in terms of our alternative high school program, the REACH program, in terms of supporting better supervision for that. We've been, we've talked about how we've changed that model a couple of times, so I'm looking for a small add there. But overall, the net change for program delivery, and again, we'll go through all of this in much more detail through our workshop, but the net program delivery change would be roughly 3.0 FTE reduction. Looking at non-classroom changes, we anticipate we would have some positions, we've, we've had an additional security personnel onsite for the Duffy Construction Project, given the intrusiveness of that construction project on, on the actual operation of the school. As we continue on with those HVAC projects, we anticipate that, that we're, we're not gonna have that same intrusive nature, and we'll be able to support school security without an additional person. We did have a planned step-down within middle school counseling, and we have a couple of positions administratively that we will describe to you in the workshops. A counseling supervisor position that's been vacant, and a reduction in, kind of a shift in how we're, how we're supporting 504 case management. So under non-classroom changes, we anticipate that we can reduce by 3.4 positions. And then finally, under support services, we'll look at our contributions to our retiree health reserve. We'll look at the use of our utility reserve based on an anticipated surplus that we expect, and our ability to reduce contributions to town pension and insurance to provide an additional 830, almost a million dollars, or, excuse me. So in total modifications, we anticipate that we can reduce our roll-forward budget by just over a million and a half with a total net savings of 8.2 positions. So that brings us to our summary. If we start from your current operating budget that you passed last year of just over 200 mil, 200 million 803,856, if we program the roll-forward increases, which again are simply the costs associated with doing the same business, that's an add of roughly 16 million, factoring in changes that preserve the majority of our programming but find efficiencies and reduce our current staffing by 8.2 positions, we see savings of, or a superintendent change of 1.5 million to bring us to a recommended budget of 14 million 400, as you were, a recommended increase of 14 million 422,964, or a total percentage increase of 7.2%. Of note, and I know my friend and colleague Rick will give me the side-eye, I will point out that we will also realize as a town and at the town level in Rick's budget, an increase this year of approximately $642,000 in educational cost sharing. It is the last installment of a multiple-year increase that the state did provide to ECS. So it, if considered, you know, contributes an extra 642,000 that, that Rick will gladly statutorily contribute to, to school costs, so. But in reality, that's there just, just as an optic. What, what I am proposing to you is a 7.2%. I know that it's been asked, and it is fairly early in the budget process, so I'll, I'll share this, kind of where does that place West Hartford relative to other towns? So there are approximately just under 100 districts thus far that have reported a budget proposal, and those districts are in various stages. In some, in some districts, they're, they're exactly where we are, that the superintendent has proposed it and the Board of Education is considering. In other districts, the Board of Education has made any and all modifications to a budget proposal, and the board has then solidified their budget and sent that forward to their town council or their financial exam, you know, financial body. And then there are a handful of districts where maybe the process might be all the way completed, but that is fairly early for, for a lot of places. Averaging all of those, we're, we're going to be above the average, and we're going to be above the DURG. But we do have company. As I mentioned earlier, we as a district face the sixth largest shortfall for our excess cost reimbursement. And that shortfall is one of the most significant drivers in the budget that's outside of our Out of the dozen or so districts in the top, in the top 12, there are only two that have reported. So the rest of them haven't even, either haven't had their budget presentation or haven't reported. One of those districts, I won't name them, although some of this information is public, one of those districts put forward, their, their Board of Education put forward an 11.5% increase citing essentially a crisis in special education funding for them. The other district put forward a 5% increase, which is in and around, it's a little bit lower than, than average, but in and around an early statewide average. There are number, the next districts down from us, one of them put in a 12.6. Another one put in, you know, if I talk about our DURG in fairness, our DURG is gonna be, is gonna be below us somewhere near, somewhere near fives. So we are going to be, this proposal that I'm making to you, I'm making full well knowing that it's somewhat above average from our DURG, but it is specific to our circumstances that we're facing. And we have company, because we do have a number of, a number of districts who, who have some of the similar issues that we have. So what happens from here is we will obviously have a, a number of workshops. And in that first budget workshop on March the 12th, what we will do is I will have the team assembled, and we will go through each section of the budget in front of you in dramatic detail to be able to talk about what the specific programs and services are within, within that component of the budget, what any increases or decreases are, and, and an ability to respond to you certainly if there are any questions, if anything rings either unfamiliar, or it was something that you, you hadn't necessarily, you know, recall the full grasp of, so we can, we can talk about, talk about that. We'll also review any, in, in greater detail, any of the recommended changes as they kind of play out. You've heard about all those different reductions and some additions that resulted in a net 8.2 fewer positions. So we'll talk about more specifically where those reductions fall and what that means, and how we would anticipate being able to still operate. I expect we'll leave budget workshop number one. You, you will likely have, certainly have, have read through, so you'll have some questions that we can clarify on the spot, but you may give us some, some guidance between March 12th and March 26th as to a second workshop where we will come and we will be responsive to anything that you've asked in that first workshop, or anything that kind of comes up in between. We'll also have the public hearing on that, which will be the major opportunity for our community to speak about the budget publicly, will occur there on March 26th. I would, I would remind the public on the 12th, it's not a Board of Education meeting, it's a workshop, so there is no public comment during, during the 12th. That said, I want to mention a couple of different ways that the public, other than the public hearing, can, can provide input. First and foremost, obviously, they can reach out through email. We do have a dedicated email that is up on our website called budget@whps.org. And we've coordinated with our colleagues and the town council to host some additional listening, listening tour on the budget, where members of the Board of Education, I know Lorna will, will talk more about this, and, and members of the town council will come out and provide opportunity for the public to listen. So those are scheduled for Wednesday, March the 12th at 3:30 PM at the Bishop's Corner Senior Citizens Center, and Monday, March the 31st, where there are two different opportunities, one in the morning at 8:30 AM at the Faxton Library, and one in the early evening, beginning at 4:00 PM at the Noah Webster Library, also on March the 31st. We also obviously have a Board of Education meeting that comes in between these board workshops two weeks from today, and that is a regular Board of Education meeting, and that Board of Education meeting has public comment. Your goal is to ask and have answered from my team any and all questions that you might so that you are prepared to do a formal budget adoption on April the 1st, at which case we turn everything over to our friends and colleagues on the town council with the hopes for a smooth passage on April the 22nd for my birthday. With that, I'll open it up to any general questions, knowing that I'm certain you will have loads of specific questions that we will likely entertain in greater detail at our first board workshop. But if there's anything I can clarify, just kind of in the overview, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair, for facilitation.
Well, thank you very much for this information. Teammates, we all knew this time was coming, and we knew we would brace ourselves for this. And so, thank you for giving the high-level picture, but also preparing us for the granular details we will be going into. And so with that, with the presentation, are there any high-level questions or comments? Again, high level, yes, Claire?
For the first budget workshop, do you anticipate all the tabs and areas being covered on a general level?
Yes, great question. So given Dave Poliuk's presence here today, I know historically, we, we broke our workshops up into like general education one night and special education on a different night. And what we've been doing for the last several years is to really go through the entirety of the budget on, at the first workshop in order to provide the time and the opportunity, if you have questions, things you want us to research, courses of action and associated cost proposals that you want us to look at, that we can essentially do that homework and come back to you with that feedback at the second workshop. And then generally, from that second workshop, maybe there's some things that you begin to consider, and, and on that last night, when we're at that budget adoption, that's when Liz kind of puts up the big giant scoreboard, and you vote on specific items or amendments that you might like to see, and you're able to see in real time the impact to the overall budget.
Other questions or comments? Jason?
Paul, thank you to you and your team as always for, for putting this together. Not really a question, I, I just wanted to say that I appreciated you giving the, the context that this budget is in, and, and especially the disparate impact that the state shortfall has on West Hartford. We have a moral obligation to these students, to all of our students, in particular to the special needs students. That's a moral obligation we share with the state. If the state's not gonna step up, we can't shirk our duties. So I look at this as kind of a tax on the town of West Hartford to be providing these services from the state, and I think that's what this budget reflects.
All right, Jason, okay. Any other questions or comments? Ethan?
I had a question on the tuition, and I may screw it up. The, you said it was 4.5, and the cost of a normal student, or is it?
Yeah, the, the actual, I'll give you the actual figures I was, I was using sort of thing. So our actual average, or per pupil expenditure, which is, which is essentially the average cost for, to, to educate one child in West Hartford, $20,706. So what the state says is if you have, you know, you need additional services as, you know, and, and it's, and it's never a question of, for students with disabilities, it's an understanding that there are gonna be some different services that we need to provide. It's not a, it's not a, it is an obligation, and it's an obligation that we undertake, you know, freely and gladly in support of those needs. So if I need a co-teacher in a room or something, you know, obviously now that, that's, or, if I need specialized transportation or something, that's gonna increase. The reimbursement doesn't kick in until you've, until we as a district have paid four and a half times the per pupil expenditure. So for West Hartford, the true value for that in this current year is $93,177. So what's supposed to happen is essentially, as soon as we're cresting above $93,000, all of those expenses above $93,000 are eligible for reimbursement. And the rate of reimbursement is coming in this year at 62 cents on the dollar.
Is that 93 on the individual student or 93?
Correct, 93. It's, it's tabulated individually, so we have to keep track of all associated costs for each individual student and, and be prepared should that be audited, you know, it's, it's measured right down to the penny in terms of the, the state auditing process. So it's a very careful delineation of associated costs that's reported to the state. And there are two periods, I believe there are two periods, Liz, in which the reimbursements happen. One, we're just reporting costs now on March 1st, and we'll get an associated reimbursement, and then there's a later filing, I believe later this year.
But I thought the percentage doesn't, they adjust based on the money they have, not based on what your target is? Does it keep popping?
So, so what we're, what we have eligible to be reimbursed is based on our target. We provide the state, you know, because, because it's hard for us to know, and it's hard for the state to know, well, what are those costs going to be? What might a student's needs become based on when they're identified or if something changes? So there's, there's projections that are happening all along the way where projections that are happening all along the way where we're reporting what we anticipate the costs to be. And from that, the state is determining out of the funds that they've, that they've set aside, and they get all the totals from across all the districts. That, that's why the reimbursement rate has gone down. It hasn't been a conscious decision on the state to give us less money. It's that their, their money that they've set aside has been flat funded for the last several years and the costs across all districts have increased. And therefore, they've, they've got less, you know, there's been a greater bill that's come in the mail, but they've got the same, you know, money in their bank account to send out, so they're only paying out less of that bill.
It's more of an allocation than a match.
It creates the need for us to increase our allocation in our townwide budget because we know we're going to get less from the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Gail?
Yeah. Thank you for presenting this. I, I know how much work this is for everybody and your, on your team over the year. I had two questions on what you presented. One was the expenditure per student, which I think you said was $20,706 or in that neighborhood. Is that a average of all of our students, including special ed? Is that just an average of what it costs per student or is that?
Exactly. If you take the total expenditures in our budget, you know, you take your total budget from last year and divide by the total number of students educated, that, that's where that's coming from.
Okay. Thank you. And the second question I had is on the enrollment changes where you're going to reduce 6.3 positions on the elementary side. Is that coming from the fact that we've changed the age that kindergarten is going to start and that would allow us to reduce that many positions?
No. So that, that savings we realized in this current year. And what that created was, because that change went into effect for this current year, we had a smaller kindergarten cohort that returns to a normal, you know, returns to normal or sets a normal, but that smaller cohort will travel all the way through, through grade 12. Just, just there were fewer kids that came into the district this current year in grade K. We are actually at the elementary level, if we, I remember looking at a projection sheet a little earlier in the budget process, if, if, if we kept all of our class sizes exactly as we have in this year, and please remember that this year we had significant parental pressure to, to lower class sizes as they came in and heard about the projections, we would be fairly flat at the elementary, you know. So our elementary enrollment in terms of how it breaks out, the, the number of kids may be up and down slightly, but in terms of how it breaks out across the, you know, the school zones, we would, we would have roughly the same number of sections of elementary when you add them all up. What we're proposing in order to get to this reduction is to tighten our class size guidelines. So, and to remind our public, you know, our class size guidelines for grades K through three look at up to 23 in a class and in grades four and five, up to 27 in a class. And obviously during our COVID years, we were significantly below those class size guidelines for all of the, you know, it started out as physical space and we were still in the throes of, you know, the elementary, when one student gets any form of illness, all students get that form of illness. So there were, there were, you know, there were real world factors that went into that. And it was a slow step off to try to maintain those smaller class sizes in support of trying to have the learning acceleration coming out of COVID, you know, because, because everything had been so disrupted, so we wanted. But, but as that, as that S R money came out, we, and started to phase off, we had to slowly go back to what are more traditional class size guidelines. And so now with this budget shortfall, we're looking, we're going to have to be fairly, I'm recommending we be fairly strict with our class size allocations in order to have the most efficient scheduling possible.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
Any other questions or comments? Claire?
So back to the excess costs in the special education. If, if a cost is 90, say $93,000 for a student and then the excess cost is reimbursed at a rate by the state, out of our 20% of kids who do get special education, what percentage of those hit that four and a half time? Do you know?
I, I don't know the exact percentage that hit that, but I can bring that to you in the workshop. What, what, a number that's in my head. Because is, is we, we've talked about our number of out placements. And I know the number had been in around 130. I think we're projecting somewhere near 135 for the coming year. But I also know, I spoke with Melissa this afternoon and, and she was celebrating a student who was returning from out of district placement to our home placement. We're also going to look at, I know we've talked as, as a board about what does an out of district placement look like? What's the profile? So one of the things I want to do, we've, we've highlighted at the table, a lot of the specialized programming that we did. We saw a presentation by Melissa and her team earlier this year where we talked about our Strive program, our intensive academic, intensive behavioral and our school engagement program, as well as our early learning center at pre-K. Those are all specialized programs that in a smaller district, if, if they weren't able to program for students with those, with those needs, would be, would go to some form of an out of district placement. So, you know, there is a return on investment and a cost savings that's associated with those programs that is, that is dramatically significant. And it's one of those things, the state is talking about in this, in this budget process, awarding of grants to districts who come up with programs. And myself and some other colleagues, we were talking today at a superintendent's meeting, like, we have all of these programs in place. We, we, we are trying to envision a program that we feel we could offer that we don't currently. And, you know, we, we talked to some of the legislators about it when asked about if those grants could extend support to districts like West Hartford who have already, you know, done the work that they're asking others to do and, and provide some of that support. So I, I don't know if any of that money, but I will get you, for our first board workshop, I'll get you a better feeling for, you know, roughly, what's the density I'm hearing you asked of, of students who, who qualify for excess cost reimbursement? And, and also we'll talk a little bit about the cost savings that we're able to see and the value of the programming that we have in place.
And, and so I guess I'm assuming outplacement would count, but then a student with a one-on-one, the salary of that one-on-one individual on top of the special services that student might need, that also would hit 90 easily?
There, there are, there are cases where you have students who have potentially multiple services and we're able to keep them in district. And there's some, there's, there's some potential for excess cost reimbursement. However, the, you know, the majority are, are issues where there are needs that we simply cannot program for here locally. And so, so that becomes the trigger because the transportation is, is a driver. And, and realistically, right now, the, the, the private facility placements, those costs have skyrocketed and there isn't, you know, there's, there's talk right now at the state level about the potential for regulating what those placements can charge because it's kind of a, it's a bull market.
Right. And, and I, I do strongly believe that a child who can be educated in district gains valuable experiences when they get out of school. So, and, but I also understand there's critical needs that have to be outplaced.
Absolutely. There, it is a balance and I, and I want my presentation to be as respectful to the individual needs as it possibly can. You know, I, I talked with Septo about this, indicating that I, they had a great transition meeting that Melissa and Kelly and, and the entire team hosted over at King Philip a couple of weeks ago. But we knew that the costs were going to be a driver and we didn't want families to feel like they were being scapegoated in any way. There are times where there are very significant needs and students, you know, it is in the best interest of the child and we support those placements fully. But we do talk about where we can, and we, we are very honest brokers of what the services are and to your point, the benefits. When they can have that same period of action, when they can potentially participate in whether it's clubs, activities, socialization, opportunities with their neighborhood friends, it, it's significant. It's, you know, the, the event that's happening on, on the 28th is, is, is just an example of that, like, nationally recognized positive programming for students here. So, you know, we do try to, at all times, not only advise in that direction with our families that may be advocating for, for something different, and also ongoing assessment of students who, who have qualified for an out of district placement in terms of a reassessment of that need and the potential to, to draw them back into the district. It's a significant effort undertaken and, and an important one for, for those same reasons.
Other questions or comments? Latoya?
I just want to say thank you, Paul and team, for putting that together. And I just want to say, you know, moving forward in this process, that I'm really looking forward to hearing from school leaders and teachers, school staff and students. I think that our school leaders and teachers and, and school staff are on the front lines. And, you know, their feedback as well as student feedback, however that's given, whether it be written or students coming or through our amazing student reps, that's going to inform how I ask questions, how I advocate. And so I'm really, really looking forward to hearing from, from everyone. So thank you.
Thanks. I want to, I want to piggyback. I just need to say it one more time. I have to, I have to shout out Liz and Barb and the whole team. I have to, I have to give a huge kudos as you look out in the crowd of all of the, all of the school leaders, all of our department supervisors, we have some teacher reps present. These, these are the folks that dedicate themselves. These are the folks, I go back to Sherri's comments about people who give of themselves above and beyond in service to something larger than themselves. And I just, just gratitude to represent them here in this budget process.
Ethan, was your hand raised?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mine's more technical. As I counted in the general fund, there's nine categories. Six of those categories, I'm assuming you're going to get the information from the town or from another source. So that'd be the medical expense, pension fund or pension expense, all other benefits, I assume. I don't, I don't really know what's in there, but. And then utilities and all other expenses seem to be based on that general insurance and workers comp. So I assume those are not discretionary.
No, not discretionary at all. We, we can talk, and I'll ask Liz if she got a good note of the question, because I know she's expert at, at those things, can talk about what they specifically mean, you know, what's within our control with that. I know, you know, you mentioned utilities, for instance. I know that's something that, that we've looked at. There's opportunity. Check my notes. I believe there was something with the usage of utility reserve based on an anticipated surplus that we anticipated in there. So we can, we can talk about what all of that means and go through it in specific detail at the, at the budget workshop. So I would say if, as you're looking through the book a little bit more, if, if that question about what you want to know kind of drills down and becomes even more specific, if you send it to me, we can be well prepared for that at that first workshop and be able to provide you with detailed answers.
I'm just trying to get a feel for what's discretionary and what's locked.
And if I may jump in here, I think, thank you so much for the question because certainly we want to know that. And that's why we're so fortunate to have the workshops, to be able to go more in the details. And so with the questions you have, we've made notes, but if there are addition, and this is speaking to all of us, if there are additional questions you have, please pass them on to Superintendent Vicina so they can be prepared to share that with us with workshop number one. And then we have workshop number two as well. And so thank you, Ethan, for reminding us of needing to do our homework to go through and ask those questions. And we certainly look forward to hearing more about them when we come together for budget workshop number one on the 12th. Did you have any other high level questions? All right. Any other high level questions or comments? Shannon?
I just want to echo the gratitude for all of the thought and effort that went into this. And in my work, working with other districts across the state, I have to say I really applaud the transparency and clarity with which you present the information because I see a lot of other budgets that are lacking that. And so just really grateful for that. And one other point I'd like to make is, this might come up in more detail, is the percentage of expense that goes out of district to pay for contracts is so minimal compared to a lot of other districts. So clearly, the capacity and the investment in that capacity within the district has been a priority. And I think speaking to that and showing that as a comparison with other districts would be really interesting, as well as the, the limited overhead and administrative percentage relative to the direct service is something that's really applauded out, out of West Hartford. It is remarked upon very frequently in other circles. And I don't know that we always get credit for that. So if we could talk about that at one of the workshops, that would be great. But thank you for all of this hard work.
Absolutely. Thank you. And in the spirit of transparency, I'll just mention again for any of the listening public at home, that by this point in time, I expect the full board book that all of you have with all of the detail, as well as the PowerPoint presentation that was shared this evening should all be online on the WHPS page under the Board of Education.
Other questions or comments? So thank you again. I echo all, all that has been shared. Thank you for sharing that the information will be available to the general public. And that is really important because this is something that involves all hands on deck. We know that the proposed budget has been shared with us and we know that come in April, we will vote on it. But then it goes before the town council and it is a part of the town council's budget and they ultimately decide what number is able to be passed forward. And, and I say that not lightly because it goes to the town council, but the board's budget makes up the bulk of the town's budget, makes up the majority of it. However, in terms of students and families, we make up the minority in terms of numbers of residents in town. So we make up the smallest in terms of percentage of residents in town, but we make up the bulk of the budget. And so therefore, it's important for all to be aware of what is involved with this budget process. And that's why we're so thankful and appreciative to our mayor, Sherri Cantor, and the town council for having these listening sessions with us. Thank you so much again, Mr. Vicina, for sharing about that. The purpose for the listening session is yes, for us to give a high level of the budget and where we are, but more importantly, it's to hear from the public and not just parents and teachers, but those that may not have children in the district. Those that may have had children in the district, but they have grown up or they are no longer in the district. We want to hear from them as well because they contribute to the support of our budget. So all hands on deck in that regard. And as Mr. Vicina shared, those listening sessions, which again will be comprised of board members, representation and town council representation. The first one is on Wednesday, March the 12th at 3:30. And the following two are on Monday, March the 31st in the morning at 8:30 and in the early evening at 4 o'clock. And we'll have the specific locations of that provided online as well. Those are in addition to other opportunities to listen and to hear your thoughts about the budget. So we know we have workshop number one on the 12th. That is to listen. So we are not receiving public comments on the 12th. However, we do have our public hearing on March the 26th. But before our public hearing on the 26th, we have our regular Board of Education meeting on March 18th. And although there'll be other agenda items talked about, we do have public comment at the beginning and the end of the meeting. So that is an opportunity to share your thoughts regarding the budget. And again, we have our, a public hearing on the 26th, followed by our second workshop on the followed by our second workshop on the twenty-sixth. And then we come together on the first to vote on the budget. And there is public comment at that time as well. However, opportunities for you to share your thoughts about the budget. In addition to public comment, you certainly can email us. And if you happen to see us in passing, you can certainly share your thoughts as well, because we collectively represent the board. So we want to certainly hear your thoughts, your questions, your suggestions. So teammates, we have a busy couple of weeks or several weeks ahead of us. But again, this is something that we have prepared for. It's important to recognize that what we are discussing is talking about investing in our young people. And Jason, yeah, you can't keep more real than how you summarized it. And so we look forward to engaging in those conversations. Any last other comments regarding the proposed budget before we move on with the agenda? All right, seeing none. Well, staff reports, board discussions, I believe, we have covered that, but we'll still pass it to you.
Yes, I defer the majority of my comments. I did want to just, two really quick things. First and foremost, again, a huge thanks for the recognition of the contributions of Dr. Tracy Wilson, and honoring, recognizing her passing. I had the privilege to speak on behalf of the district and regarding, you know, regarding the loss. And I'll simply say she was a champion for students. I'm aware that there's, it was published that there's services for her here at the Town Hall on Thursday, March sixth, this week, from twelve to three. I also want to mention, as was mentioned, I'll reinforce what the student said, a moment of great celebration on March twenty-eighth at Conard Hall pep rally. Not open to the general public, but as a board, you're invited to witness the installation of the National Unified Champion School banner, which will be presented by the Special Olympics to the student athletes and other participants in our West Hartford Unified Sports Team. And so I believe you have a flyer describing the location of that, and I hope that you guys are able to attend. Other than that, I will save my other comments for our next regular board meeting.
All right, thank you. Moving on to routine matters, where we have approval of the minutes, seek. Oh, that's all right, yes, Latoya.
Just wanted to say, Happy Women's History Month. It's March, International Women's and Girls' Day is coming up. And I have to bring it up, because, you know, without women, we wouldn't have a board. And, you know, we don't just have, you know, we have heavy hitters up here. We have two amazing student reps, we have two PhDs on the board, we have an executive director of one of the most impactful nonprofits in the state, and we have a community legend and activist down there, Claire. And then, y'all already know, I'm a queen. And then the superintendent's team as well, the school leaders in this district, the teachers. I mean, this town can't run without women. And so I just wanted to lift that up. Happy Women's Month, and salute to all the queens in West Hartford.
I'll second that for the minutes.
All right, Latoya, nice, all right, all right. And so with that well-said statement, approval of the minutes, seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting of February the nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Thank you, Jason, is there a second? Thank you, Ethan. Discussion. I'm starting chuckling, I think that's the first time that, oh, right, well, no, leave a B. Okay, any other discussion? All right, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? The ayes have it, thank you. Information and reports, board members, do we have any other comments or reports? Again, we thank you, Latoya, for recognizing Women's History Month, which can be celebrated year-round. Thank you so very much for that. Any other comments, yes, Claire?
Yeah, so I just wanted to give a shout-out. We had seven students from Conard Hall that volunteered for the whole practice season for Special Olympics. Every Monday night, they came and skied and worked with our Special Olympians. This weekend was the Special Olympics at Powder Ridge, and we had twelve Olympians. We took home over twelve gold medals. And it's just really important, those students that came every single Monday night meant a lot to the athletes. They learned a lot, the athletes learned a lot. And it was the epitome of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I just wanted to send a thanks to all the kids that helped. My daughter now calls it Unified skiing, which we've never had that program before. So, and I thank you, there were eighty-seven athletes in the state of Connecticut that all competed. It was a great weekend.
Thank you, Claire, wonderful. Any other comments or pieces to share? Right, and so with that, moving on to future business, where we have several announcements of future meeting dates. First, beginning with Wednesday, March the twelfth, at three-thirty, where we'll have our Board of Ed Town Council Listening Session regarding the budget. And then that evening at seven o'clock, we will have Budget Workshop number one here at the Town Hall in room three-fourteen. And then on Tuesday, March the eighteenth, we'll have our regular Board of Education meeting at seven o'clock here at the Town Hall, room three-fourteen. And then on Wednesday, March the twenty-sixth, we'll have our Board of Education Public Hearing at seven o'clock, followed by Budget Workshop number two, all taking place here at the Town Hall in room three-fourteen. And then on Monday, March the thirty-first, at eight-thirty a.m., we'll have our Board of Ed Town Council Listening Session regarding the budget. And then that evening at four o'clock, again, having the Board of Ed Town Council Listening Session regarding the budget. And then on Tuesday, April the first, twenty-twenty-five, our regular Board of Education meeting, where we will have adoption of the Superintendent's twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget at seven o'clock here in room three-fourteen. Do we have a request for any other future agenda items? Seeing none, do we have anyone in the public who would like to make a public comment? It's wonderful to see a sea of you all, beautiful, all right. Seeing none, in terms of making public comments, see lots of you all, yes. We do not have an executive session, therefore, seeking a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Thank you, Shannon, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Latoya, meaning adjourned.